Our next work session is the Fire and EMS Update Chief Center.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Dr. Casey, thank you for the opportunity to come before you to provide the Fire and EMS Annual Update. We're here a little bit earlier this year than in previous years, so we may not have had enough opportunity to do a deep dive in some of our data that we're going to be presenting today, but some of the data products that you'll see are going to be very familiar to you, others may be new. If it requires, if your questions require any additional research, we'll be happy to follow up with you after, after our session today. I'm being joined today by a few individuals. I have Assistant Chief Keith Chambers, who's over there on the back row, if we have any questions concerning community risk reduction. We have Battalion Chief Justin Adams is here. I know we're going to be talking a little bit about EMS and some of our innovations there. And finally, we have Captain Joe Harvey from the Fire Marshal's Office, who's here to answer any questions you may have about the coal pile fire in Winter Park, and we'll talk about that in a little while. I'd like to start, as I typically do in my presentations, in recognizing our people, our most important asset, and in particular, I want to recognize and talk a little bit about those that have made the ultimate sacrifice over the past couple of years. You may remember that earlier this year that we received a favorable ruling from VRS for firefighter recruit Tyvon Eldridge, and that his death was seen as resulting in the performance of his duties as a firefighter in accordance with the Line of Duty Act. And as you heard earlier when I was talking about Captain Selhors, he's worked very closely with the family to apply for public safety officer benefits at the federal level, and we're still waiting to hear a little bit more about that. If those benefits are awarded, he will be eligible for placement on the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and will continue to work with the family in that regard. We, after Tyvon's death, we pulled together a cross-functional investigative team from other jurisdictions to help us out here locally, and we have implemented all seven recommendations from that report. I'm happy to say we did that very quickly, and those are in place, and we're still awaiting the first draft of a report from the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health. They are charged by Congress to investigate all firefighter line-of-duty deaths, and so we're expecting within the next 30 to 60 days to see that first draft, which the department will have the opportunity to review and provide feedback, and also work with the family on that. Just prior to the one-year anniversary of the death of firefighter Alicia Monahan, the Human Resources Director was notified that the Virginia Retirement System ruled Alicia's death to be the result of her employment as a firefighter under the Line of Duty Act, and so we'll continue to work with that family as well on any future benefit applications. I couldn't be prouder of the way that our members have pulled together over the past two years and supported each other, and in particular, the family, and we continue to provide support for both families. On June 3rd, many of Tyvon's fellow recruits and instructors turned out to the Richmond Raceway Complex for the Virginia Fallen Firefighters' Memorial Service, where Tyvon was recognized with seven other firefighters who passed away last year. On May 23rd, a blue, a sea of blue was seated on the front row at the Seagull Center at Cosby High School's graduation, as Alicia's oldest son graduated high school. And so that was truly touching for the family to see that. These acts of kindness and love truly exemplify the very essence of Chesterfield Fire and EMS. Dr. Casey's been very supportive of our peer support efforts, and in particular, its integration with a contract clinician. And over the past couple of years, that's been very important, as we've worked through these tragedies, and as individuals have dealt with just day-to-day issues here on the job and at home. And these efforts have no doubt saved a couple of lives. I can't go into complete details on those, but no doubt it's made a big difference in our department, and we're very appreciative of that. Our members who have experienced tragedy here at home have worked hard to assist other fire departments who have experienced similar tragedy. We had a team of members from our Training Division that recently traveled to Frederick County, Virginia, to assist them as they work through the aftermath of a firefighter recruit death in their locality, and I'm very proud of their efforts to help their colleagues. While we didn't have any awards or any type of events worth, that rise to the level of a Valor Award at the Regional Valor Award Ceremony back in December, at our ceremony back in April, we did issue 13 Lifesave Awards, 18 Unit Citations, and we also recognized the promotions of four captains, 17 lieutenants, and four civilians that have occurred over the past couple of years. As you know, we had to suspend a lot of our in-person recognition during COVID, and we've finally got our feet back underneath us and are moving ahead. And over the coming years, we will do these in combined sessions. We'll have a combined awards and promotion ceremony, and we'll do two of those per year, one in October, one in April. So watch for those invites to put on your calendars. I know many of you enjoy coming to those events. It's a great opportunity to recognize the achievements of our members and to allow the families to join in those celebrations with their loved ones. We also received several, you know, national awards, and I know in Octo, actually in August, we'll be back before the board with many other awardees here in the county for the NACO awards. There were four that Fire and EMS was a part of. Our extensive efforts to provide lithium ion battery training for fires and for firefighters and how to deal with those situations, that's been a very significant effort over the past year and will continue into the future. Our paramedic, in-house paramedic program received recognition through the Emergency Medical Services Training Facility Award. A work performance evaluation that we do every year on firefighters to make sure that they're in good physical condition to perform the job, that received an award. And also, we work with the IST Department on the Citizen Emergency Services and Interaction Improvements, and that allows us to get some real-time feedback from our customers when we respond to incidents out in the field. We also are very proud of our Above and Beyond Award that we received from the employer support of the Guard and Reserve. We are certainly honored, whenever we can, to hire and work with our veterans, and we'll talk a little bit more about some of our successes in that area in a minute. In order to provide quality services, you have to be able to retain and recruit a high-performing workforce. During FY 2023, our department's total turnover rate inched back up near pre-pandemic levels, but I'm happy to report that certainly retirements are remaining low as a reason for separations in our department, and that is due in large part to the efforts of this board in implementing the Public Safety Pay Plan and some of the other adjustments that have occurred over the past couple of years. That has really served as a very good retention tool for our most valued, most senior employees. Where we continue to have a lot of turnover is at the lower levels, you know, one to five-year range, where individuals are seeking other occupations. Some of it's for better opportunities, better pay, and others are leaving for better work-life balance, given our shift schedule and in particular, the mandatory overtime that we've had over the past few years. Again, our retirements are remaining low, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute as to what the outlook looks like for the future. I am very happy to report that we're heading in the right direction for mandatory overtime. You've heard me talk about this over a period of years, and with your support and support of Matt Harris and Gerard Durkin in the Budget Office, we've been able to make some significant headway, and we'll be able to continue to do that over the next year in adding more staff to make sure that we're appropriately staffed, so that we're not relying as heavily on overtime and in particular, mandatory overtime. So at the, at the end of the second quarter of FY 2023, we reached a high of nine mandatories a day on average, okay, and that was not sustainable. Over the past six months, we've seen some improvements. One of those areas, we did receive 12 new positions in FY 2023 for, you know, minimum staffing, and we were able to release 10 of those who had previous medical training. We were able to get those folks out in the field in May, and that's made a big difference already. We have 36 positions that the Board approved for this fiscal year. We've worked with Matt and Gerard to spread those out over three successive schools. We can't do 36 in one school, and so we've got a very workable solution to work those new positions in the department, get them onboarded over the next, next year. And if we find, for example, when we get to the, the January school, that we have some more openings, Matt has agreed to consider maybe moving some of those positions up a little bit sooner. So by the time we get to mid-2025, we should be in a good place regarding our relief factor, which our goal is to get to a 1.32 relief factor. You may recall in some previous meetings, Dr. Casey has mentioned that once we get to that point, that may still not be enough, when you consider some of the improvements that we've had in, in leave opportunities and some of the other mandates that we've had from the state and local government. We'll have to continue to look at our leave utilization year over year, and we may have to make some adjustments there. Another thing that we're going to have to talk about with adding these positions is that we're going to have to create more opportunities for people to use their leave. Right now, we're pretty much locked into a maximum during high leave utilization time periods of 18 positions that we allow off for scheduled leave, scheduled planned leave, whether it's PTO or vacation or something like that. We need to increase the number of leave slots that we have in the future, and that will have to be factored into that decision down the road. But this is good news, and again, I appreciate the support of the Board on this effort. You, you said you were going to make this happen, and you did, and I know that the firefighters really appreciate it, and that they're starting to see the benefits of that. So far as our retirement outlook, over the next five years, we will have up to 85 members in our uniform service who will be eligible for retirement. We tried to get a little bit better handle this spring on how many people are likely to retire over the next four years. And based on the survey responses that we got, we're expecting upwards of about 47 retirements over the next four years. That averages out to about 12 retirements per year. And so that, again, is not out of line from what we've seen in the past five years, which is averaging about 10, so that's pretty manageable. Now, we did have about a dozen individuals that didn't respond to the survey, and there's always opportunities for individuals' conditions to change or circumstances to change. They may get a better opportunity for a retirement job and may make a move, or their family circumstances may change, and they may decide to move a little bit sooner. But right now, we see that our retirement, you know, process for the next couple of years is going to be pretty manageable. But among those individuals that are eligible for retirement over the next five years, many of those are in our leadership positions, and so our continued support for our leadership development, leadership programs is going to be important in the coming years. I often get questions on how we're doing in firefighter recruitment, and I'm happy to say that we're doing pretty well. Now, we're not getting the numbers of applicants that we used to see in previous years, you know, and many times, we would see upwards of 1,000 applicants. We don't see those types of numbers anymore, but this is not, this is not unique to Chesterfield. A lot of other fire departments in Virginia are seeing similar numbers to ours. In the recruitment process this past spring, that set the candidates for the current Recruit Academy that's in session right now, we received 400 applicants, and then, of course, we've hired about 26 of those. We even had enough, and we'll talk about that in a minute, to be able to issue some conditional job offers for the next Recruit Academy. We worked with Mary on that, and that was very helpful as we moved forward. So again, I'm feeling very good about this. We always keep an eye on it. A few years ago, we did have situations where we were not able to fill all of our openings, but now we're doing fairly well. We can fill all of our vacancies. We're filling all of our double fills and any new positions that we've been approved for. So let me highlight some of our successes in the most recent hiring process. For Recruit School 67, it began on the end of June, and will graduate, they will graduate in December, late December. We hired nine military veterans or reservists, and let me give you a breakdown of some of those. We have two Army Rangers. We have a Marine who was assigned to HMX-1, which is the squadron for the Presidential Helicopter, also known as Marine One, and a Navy Corpsman. We also did a deferred hiring for a Navy SEAL when he gets discharged, and will start in the January school. All very good candidates and will be good members of our department. We hired five volunteer firefighters. Three of our recruits have previous medical experience, and we hired two firefighters from other career to fire, career fire departments. One was the Virginia Beach Fire Department, and another was the North Hudson Regional Fire Service in New Jersey. So again, this really goes to the fact that the, the importance this Board has placed on starting salary and keeping it competitive, certainly here in the region, has made a big difference in our ability to attract new candidates and good people in that. So far as our activities over the past year, call volume actually kind of went flat on us at the end of, of the fiscal year. We were on a very fast track early in the fiscal year. Call volume was increasing at a pretty fast rate, and then things kind of leveled off, and we had a very slow spring. So we only saw about a 0.7% increase in total call volume. Things have picked up again in July, and we're seeing, you know, we're on, currently on track to, to exceed 50,000 incidents in the current fiscal year of FY 24, 24. The five-year growth in call volume has been around 3.5% on average, which is higher than the average population growth in each of those years. And as you, you recall in many of my previous presentations, nearly 80% of our call volume is related to medical emergencies. So far as emergency medical services is concerned, during FY 2023, we transported 25,153 patients to local medical facilities, a number that increased by 3.8% year-over-year and 13.2% over the previous five-year period. Our average patient age continues to increase. It was at 58.2 in 2023, and that, again, exemplifies the shifting in our population. We're the fastest-growing demographic of those that are going to be 65 years of age and older, and so our patient load is continuing to get older. Our mobile integrated health program, our MIH program, and Mr. Winslow, I know you're very, you've been spending some time with them over the years, they continue to experience increased volumes in both patients, and those with substance abuse. That represents a 17.3% and 19% growth year over year, respectively. And about a year ago, Matt Harris approached us with an opportunity to bolster our staffing levels and needs in MIH with some ARPA funding to get these, these positions kicked off. We now have six positions in MIH, and that's making a real difference and a real difference in the community. So we'll be coming to the Board in future budget cycles to make those positions permanent in the general fund, but that's been a great program and continues to excel. We always take a look at where call volume is increasing and what the density looks like across the county. We had five districts that saw, you know, some pretty significant increased growth. The airport, Cloverhill, Bon Air, Phillips, and Wagstaff areas saw some, some growth, and we've only had time to really drill down and look at where the call increase is coming for the airport district, and a lot of that is here in the county government center, whether it's Lucy Core, whether it's the, some of the other facilities here, the jail, and then we had two residential addresses in their first-due area or emergency response district that saw some significant increases in call volume of 10 or more calls a year, and those would be normally flagged for our MIH program to follow up on. So those are some things that happen and can really shift your call volume in one particular area. So it's kind of interesting to see how this moves around a little bit in certain areas. Some of our top five busiest districts and top five busiest stations were not surprising to us. Those are the typical ones that you see, Buford, Chester, Dale, Cloverhill, and Midlothian. Our busiest engine company continues to be Engine 209 at our Buford Road Fire Station, and our busiest medic unit is Medic 211 at the Dale Station there. So, Mr. Holland, your district is, is still very busy. One area of concern is our volunteer activity. We continue to keep the door open for our volunteers and encourage volunteerism wherever possible, but across the country, volunteerism is on a decline, and people don't have the time with, you know, with their careers, their family demands, to put the time into getting all the additional training and commit the hours to stay proficient in their skills and to answer the calls for service. And so while all of, most all of our volunteer agencies saw a decline in staffing hours over the last year, the one that's the most concerned to us is the Manchester Volunteer Rescue Squad Station. During FY 2023, they were staffing only about 40.9 hours per week on average, and if you look at the chart on the right of the screen, you'll see that their unit reliability, in other words, the percentage of time that they are in service and staffed and available to respond to a call, has continued to drop to about 22%. So that's pretty concerning. Our goal is to have our, our ambulances available to respond 80% of the time, and so this is an issue that we're going to have to address in future years, and so you may, may hear a little bit more about this as we work through the budget process in, in the next six months. We also like to try to make sure that we're keeping in line with our benchmarks in accordance with national standards and with our own established goals here in the county, and an important measure is how quickly can we arrive on scene with the first unit to stop the clock on a life-threatening medical emergency or a fire. And what you see here are the benchmarks for the urban area where most of our population resides and most of our calls occur, and our goal is to be on scene seven minutes from the 911 call 90% of the time for the highest priority emergencies, have a first unit on there. A fire engine will stop the clock on that metric for both fire and EMS calls, given the training that they have and the equipment that they carry onboard. So again, having that on the, on scene within seven minutes 90% of the time. If you look at where we're at, you know, we're about three and a half minutes longer in meeting our stated goal at the 90th percentile. We also are seeing increases in that year-over-year. We need to do a little bit deeper dive into those, those data metrics and try to determine what's going on. There's a number of factors that can be at play here, and we'll follow up with you once we do that, but that's, that'll be a project on our list for this, this year. But you can see from the map what is possible with the four-minute drive time, which is just one segment of that seven-minute response time, based on the expansive area of the county, but the green shaded areas is where we can reasonably reach a four-minute drive time as part of that seven-minute response time. Another important metric that we watch is how quickly can we get the right numbers and types of resources together to deal with a significant fire or other emergency to bring it safely and effectively under control. And this would also very often mean our, our first response, our first alarm assignment, if you will, for a structure fire. And what you see here on the map is what is reasonable, what can be reasonably expected to get three engines and one ladder truck on scene for a 2,000-square-foot house that may be on fire, given the vast area of the county that we have to cover. And so our time commitment here, our goal is we're about eight minutes and 44 seconds longer than our goal for getting those first units, that, that effective response force on scene within our, our stated goal. Again, we've got a large area to cover, and it makes it difficult to try to get to those, but we continue to watch this, and we'll give you more detail as we do a little deeper dive on this as well. So far as significant incidents, I know that throughout the year, you'll hear about these, these incidents. We had 33 incidents where there was a loss of over $100,000, and we unfortunately had four civilian fire deaths. Two of those, and do you want to, Keith, do you want to mention anything about the four civilian fire deaths while we're on that? You may have to move up to, move up to the table here for a second, so that goes on the, turn the microphone on. There you go.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Members of the Board, Dr. Casey. The four civilian fire deaths that occurred in this fiscal year, which is also this calendar year, two of them were elderly females. One was as a result of a homicide, actually, and arson case, and the other one is a result of smoking. Inherently, over the past 15 years, smoking has been the number-one cause of all of our fire fatalities, at 45% of the last 15 years and 38 residential fatal fires. 88% of them occur between 8:00 at night and 8:00 in the morning, and 94% of them occurred on Friday and Saturday and Sunday nights. So we're really trying to put our educational efforts out there to notify, you know, those citizens, you know, where the bulk of those fire fatalities occur. So the number-one reason we can try to prevent these are smoke alarms. Looking back through some of the history of last fiscal year, just 108 incidents are 31% of our residential fires. A smoke alarm actually alerted an occupant and had them take an action to get out of the house. So we know they work one-third of the time, at least. So we're trying to put a good educational effort on that as well.
And then trends that you're seeing so far as causes of fire in general in the county and structure fires?
Which is probably no secret to anyone. This year, as well as previous years, cooking, kitchen-related fires, 40% of our fires occur in that kitchen. The kind of far gap down below that, 20%, it's a combination of smoking, open flames, hot embers and ashes, candles, grills, and that such.
Thank you. One particular incident that's been unique in my 40-plus-year career has been a fire that's, that spanned parts of two fiscal years, and I know that we have Captain Joe Harvey here with us from the Fire Marshal's Office, and I can't say enough good things about Joe and his team, who've really worked very hard on this particular incident, working with our state agencies that are responsible for the mediation efforts for this event, as well as to keep the community as informed as they can, based on what we know from, from the state agencies. As most residents in Chesterfield know, there's a long history here with the county and coal, and some of the first commercially mined coal happened here in, in Chesterfield back as far as the 1700s, and this is the Richmond Coal Belt that runs from the Winter Park area all the way up to, I believe, Glen Allen. And in the Winter Park area in particular, there was the Bright Hope Mine, and there was a lot of mining that was done there until the late 1800s, I believe, and they didn't have a lot of the technology and ability to separate out some of the coal from shale and other things that they would pull out of the mines, and so there are literally these coal piles that are in different places throughout Winter Park, all the way up into, to Midlothian. They've long since been covered over by dirt, vegetation, large trees in many cases, and if you didn't know they were there, you would just think it would, it was a hill that was there that you were crossing. This is unique. I've not been able, and talking to a lot of folks that have been around for a long time, find any type of situation like this has occurred in the, in the past. We still don't quite have a, a good idea of what started this. There's a couple of options or possibilities. It could be spontaneous heating from deep inside the pile. You know, we, further discussions with our state partners, this, this thing could have been burning for, for a period of years. We just don't know. This, you know, I'll give you a little bit of information and background on the timeline. The first 911 calls we started receiving were, involved odors, a strong odor in the area, particularly at Coleboro and Black Road area, and so that, that started occurring on March 6. The Winter Park, what was that? Any questions?
No.
We started, you know, the, the Winter Park Fire Station responded down on a couple of calls there, and couldn't find anything, and ultimately, the Fire Marshal's Office got involved, and I'll let Joe talk a little bit more about their efforts here in a minute. But a gob fire was reported to Virginia Energy by a nearby resident on March 8. This is before we actually, you know, were able to find out what was exactly going on. And a gob fire means garbage of bituminous coal. Is that correct, in geological terms? I didn't know I was going to learn more about some of the, the geology terms here. But it is, it was reported by this resident who, who has a lot of, of knowledge of the history of coal mining in that area. He became aware that this pile was smoldering, had been working for several weeks, we believe, with a portable pump in Winter Park Creek to try to cool the fire and put it out. Never said anything to the county, went straight to the state, called it into Virginia Energy, which is the authority, has jurisdiction here, and the Fire Marshal's Office happened to be overlooking for the source of the odor on March 9, and were alerted by this very resident, and he showed them what was going on. By that time, representatives from the Abandoned Mine Land Project that works for Virginia Energy, they were, they were coming on site, and we were able to get a handle on what was going on. So they brought in contractors in, in March and tried to exact some remediation efforts. They completed their first attempts in March 25. Joe and his team went back, they kept monitoring the site for a period of time. They found the pile smoldering again on April 26, and AML completed their second remediation efforts on May 24. Once again, Joe found it smoldering again on June 16, and as it stands right now, we have a contractor who's going to be on site for a period of weeks, seven days a week. They're available to us. What they're doing is working to make sure that the fire doesn't spread. They're trying to cool the pile. They're trying to do what they can to create a fire break around there and prevent it from spreading, and then AML is working on developing a much broader plan and getting approval from DEQ to be able to finally remediate this site. And I think Joe's got some late-breaking news that you might be able to share with us, so I'll turn it over to him.
Good afternoon. I spoke with a representative from Virginia Energy this afternoon. They are there on site currently, and they have removed all of the timber from the pile itself. So they feel like part of the problem has been is that the root systems for the trees have been supplying this smoldering coal with fuel along with the coal, and has caused it to continue to burn. So in the last few days, they've removed all the timber from the pile itself. They've removed that timber off-site, and they are working on the left-hand side of the pile now to cool that material off, mix it with the material that they've brought in, to get that side of the pile that's smoldering. They said the highest temperatures that they've encountered this week are anywhere between 500 and 550 degrees in the ground, and then they're projecting that they'll be on site doing this for three weeks. Once that is complete, they're projecting that it'll be four to six months before all of the other things and permits are acquired through DEQ and other agencies that they're having to, you know, get permits through to be able to do the complete site remediation.
Is that the extent of the mound, or is that just part of it? How big is this area?
So that mound there, you're just seeing the face of the one end of it. The mound itself, they're estimating the size of that is to be about an acre. The mound itself, they're estimating the size of that is to be about an acre.
It's interesting, if you go into the the geospace from the county's GIS system and you look at the parcel layers, there's one there for topographical parcels, and you can actually see the, and you can see other places along this area in Winter Park where there are other coal piles, spoils, piles like this. Pretty interesting. But but again, one, I know one of the frustrating things for the residents is that the fire department has no authority over over the situation. And we have responded regularly to 911 calls, complaints of odor, smoke in the area. We do monitor it very closely to make sure that the fire is not spreading. And again, Joe and his folks are really on top of that, and they've done a very good job there.
Chief, if I could add to that, you know, I've been out to the site multiple times. The pile that you see, what what he didn't tell you is that they had heavy equipment out there pulling that whole pile apart and then soaking it down to cool it, moving it to another location, and then putting it back and pushing it back in, and then covering it, the entire pile with with material and gravel. And even in doing all that and pulling it out and actually even flying a drone over and measuring temperatures where it looked like it was out, it still wasn't out. And and after a bit of time, it just came right back up. So we, you know, eventually, I think they're going to have to completely unearth that entire pile to try and figure out just exactly how deep it goes.
I was pretty surprised earlier this week when I did a site visit, and the contractors had actually used excavators to actually pull the stumps out of the ground. And we're talking trees that are 25, 30 inches in diameter, where the stumps themselves were just burnt up to where, and then who knows how far their roots extended. So there's a lot of hope that by removing all of that timber, pulling up the the stumps, that we can keep this area and get that fire put out within this next three-week time period. And then the plan will be to remediate it so that we don't have to deal with it again, hopefully.
Sure. A couple of questions. The first one is, how nearby are homes in that area?
The closest house is about 400 yards away. So, I mean, it, there's about a five or six acre lot, and then there's another five or six acre lot would be the closest home. So relatively not close. I mean, 400 yards to some people would would say it's close, but that would be the closest house.
And just kind of connected with that, water and sewage, are you bringing all the water out there, or is there water already out there to, I mean, how are you getting the water out there?
So we, there are no, there is no public water out there. If we utilize water, we have to either draft out of a site, or we bring water in a in a tanker truck and then deliver it and then draft out of a portable pond. Virginia Energy is and does have a permit through DEQ to pump water out of Winter Park Creek. For the small amount of water that they're using on a daily basis, they're just using a gasoline pump and actually pumping water out of Winter Park Creek.
And I think there's, there's only been a couple of days where we've actually had an extensive water shuttle operation with our tankers going on to give them some added water, and that was probably during the second efforts to remediate the the pile. As it stands right now, we're just responding on, you know, any type of 911 call for smoke in the area. Again, either the fire company or one of Joe's folks goes out and checks in on a periodic basis to make sure that we don't have any concerns of fire spread.
And then also connected with that, how is this area different than the mines in other areas of the county? I mean, I'm thinking, of course, of Midlothian, a lot more houses around there and those kind of things. So I'm curious to know if there are any proactive approaches we need to take to avoid such issues when we have that.
We've talked to Virginia Energy about some, you know, further discussion that needs to take place, you know, based on this. Is there anything we need to think about as a county to let other landowners know to be careful? And and maybe there's some other efforts that we can put in place to prevent something like this from happening. This particular pile is a little bit unique in the fact that it has been disturbed over a period of years. There, some of the material had been removed and used for fill, and there was an occupant that was living on this property that had been chiseling into the pile, actually cutting stairs in to create some areas where he could sit and so forth. That that individual's been relocated to another property. But there were also some signs of, you know, some trash fires and campfires in and around the the pile as well. So this is a little bit different than a lot, a lot of these piles are just covered over with with soil, with vegetation and trees, and you don't even know that they're there.
Mr., go ahead.
Sorry. So I understand, I mean, like, I know that mulch piles can get hot when they're sitting around. So this was really not a result of like a pile just getting heat from the earth or from the sun? This was actually men, women created, where with chiseling and things like that, or?
We don't know for sure. And and our contacts at the state really haven't given us a specific cause. There's some, we discussed some possibilities. It could be, again, it could be internal, you know, spontaneous heating from inside the pile, you know, naturally occurring phenomenon, or it could be an external source that happened. We just don't know, I don't think we'll ever know that for sure, unfortunately.
Mr. Chairman, from an environmental perspective, the quality of air, has anyone reviewed that to make sure that it's safe for the general areas? You pointed out 400 yards away. Have we evaluated that?
So in the, in the beginning of the process, we brought everybody to the table, EPA, DEQ, that we felt needed to be involved in the process. We were, at the time, using the monitors that we, as a fire department, have, and we're monitoring the air. The only time we would get any kind of alert on our monitors is where when we were right there, either near the smoke, next to the smoke. We did have some citizens that were concerned about that, and we would go to their houses, monitor their houses, and would get complete zeros on all of our monitors. And then for the next couple of weeks, we picked out four or five areas around the Winter Park area within Black Road, River Road, Coalboro Road, that we would monitor every day, three times a day, just to make sure that there was nothing, you know, in the air that would affect these folks. And again, through that two weeks, we got zeros on the monitor every time we checked those areas.
And we, and all I add too, also, in the early stages, there was consultation with DEQ and EPA, and and based on the readings that Joe and his folks were picking up, they did not feel a need to come out. They were not overly concerned that this was a risk to the the broader community. The sulfur smell is is a nuisance. We have to remember also that, you know, for for centuries, we used coal for for heating, you know, and and for industrial purposes. And so there were probably a lot of cities back in the 1800s that smelled just like this coal pile. But it is an irritant, it's a nuisance for for some, and so that does cause a generation of some 911 calls. But we don't have any actionable data to suggest that this is a risk to the community, and therefore, we've not taken any more aggressive steps in that regard.
Chief, I know that there is a mine shaft in that area, and from talking with you and staff, there's nothing to indicate, at least at DEQ's perspective or our perspective, that that mine shaft is on fire because of this incident. That's question number one. And then number two, in our discussions with DEQ, since we have been putting a lot of water on on the fire in that area, and that water is actually draining into Winter Park Creek, and that Winter Park Creek feeds essentially into the, into Lake Cheson and the Appomattox River. Has DEQ talked about doing downstream testing just to make sure that if there's any type of contaminants that could actually be coming off the site and going into the water? So it's a two-part question.
So I know that DEQ is involved through this permitting process that's going on now. I think there will be some of that. Obviously, there have been silt fences put in place, and then on a conference call that I was on the other day, they talked about that a lot of this stuff that would come off this pile has been going into the groundwater for years, anyway. But I do believe that DEQ will do some of that in the future. You know, it was brought up that, you know, there's a swamp on the backside of that. So that, you know, in fact, is a good thing for the groundwater purposes. It's kind of nature's filter. But they do plan on doing some testing in the in the future.
Getting back to your first question, Mr. Carroll, we've not gotten any information, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, any new details that you've had today, we've not gotten any information from our state agencies that we've been dealing with, that there's any concern that it has entered the mine. Again, as they start digging down and they look into the actual source of this, you know, we may know more, but right now, we've not heard that as a a concern relayed to us so far.
And they have not actually uncapped the mine. So as far as we know, the mine could be full of water. We don't, we don't have any idea, right?
So the one, there are two, I guess, what I would call shafts, one up on top of the pile and one over on the side. Today, I was told that they're not 100% sure that the one on the top of the pile is a shaft, because they said it has a sliding board slope, which would not be indicative of a mine shaft. It may just be some sort of air vent. But the other one, I was told it is full of water. So, and the one on top, they have cordoned that area off, and they are just kind of meticulously working the pile around that as to not open it up to, you know, introduce anything that they don't want to get in there.
Thank you. Anybody else got any questions? Thank you.
And Mr. Carroll, thank you for all your support and interest in this this situation, and we appreciate having you come out and and see it firsthand. It's going to be helpful for you, I know, explaining it to your constituents as we continue to work through this, and it looks like it's going to be a situation that we're going to have to deal with for at least the next four to six months likely. So we'll keep you posted on that.
Well, and I appreciate having you all have done, especially to put on social media into in the neighborhood. Facebook page is the information updating the the community, what's going on with with this. And I would say that in the future, if you could, if you have some additional information, if you forward it to our media people as well, and we can actually help facilitate that and push it out to the community, even in a larger scale, just so they know what's going on. Thank you.
Yeah, kudos to Teresa. She's been a big help, you know, bridging the gap between our PIO as well as the Virginia Energy's PIO and getting the information out there as best as we can to the community.
Just a quick question. Is this on county land, or is this one privately owned land?
No, sir, it's on private land.
I guess the follow-up question to that is, and the landowner has been cooperating with this, from my understanding, from the beginning?
Yes, sir. Virginia Energy has forms that they require landowners to fill out before they can even come on site to allow them to do the work. And this work is being done at no cost to the landowner. So yes, they have gotten permission from them and been 100% cooperative.
Thank you. Certainly a cross to the taxpayers of the state, because DEQ's the ones footing the bill, right?
So it's my understanding, and I, that it's federal money that is set aside for the-
This type of remediation?
This type of remediation.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You called my application. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Moving along, just to give you an update on some of the technology that we use, first and foremost, we have PulsePoint, I talked about this, we rolled this out back in 2022. And since we've continued to market this to community, I appreciate you continuing to market this to your constituents. This basically allows residents who have CPR training to sign up for the app and to place themselves available. If a sudden cardiac arrest occurs in a public place, they would get alerted if they're nearby. And it's very important that we get somebody on scene to do CPR and get an AED on scene as soon as, as soon as possible when somebody suffers cardiac arrest. So we continue to see, we've seen about a 33% increase in monthly users, and we've tripled the number of users who have their CPR alerts enabled. So that's been a good program as well. We talked to you in some of our previous meetings, our 221 meetings, about our emergency medical dispatch protocols, and and very recently, back in September, we implemented ProQA, which is, again, is an electronic form of our emergency medical dispatch system that that our 911 dispatchers use to triage and prioritize what type of resources are sent to medical emergencies. And we've had some real good success with this program. ProQA is used by many of the same EMS agencies in this area that we partner with, and nationwide, over 3,700 agencies use ProQA. It provides consistent pre-arrival information to callers, it provides documentation for an audit trail, and it sends the closest appropriate resource and keeps critical services available for true emergencies. It also avoids unnecessary overdispatch of limited resources. And so the graph that you see on the left is sort of the breakdown of call dispatches by advanced life support versus basic life support. And what we've found over the years, when you have a lot of variability between dispatchers that are screening calls, you have a lot of variability in how those calls are classified. And so in many cases, it defaults to the, you know, the dispatcher may default to the worst-case scenario, and we may be overdispatching resources. So if you have a very serious medical emergency, you may be sending the fire engine and an ambulance when really all you needed to do was send an ambulance, and you may even need to send it non-emergency because it wasn't a true emergency. And so you see that spread there between the ALS and BLS. So we're now seeing that we have more of our calls and more of our medical emergencies are being classified as basic life support, which is a good thing. The biggest telltale story is on the right, where you can see after ProQA, hot versus cold response. So hot would be red lights and siren, cold would be normal driving, no red lights and siren. And you see a big shift in where we've come with how we dispatch and respond to calls. And so more often than not now, our EMS calls are involving cold response, which that's a good thing, because that's less wear and tear on our vehicles. It involves sending fewer vehicles out of the door from the fire station for a given call. And more importantly, it improves the safety for not only our members, but also those in the public that we might encounter on the roadway if we're running red lights and siren. That is a very risky operation. And so the less often we have to do that, the better it is for our members and our civilians. So we're having good success with ProQA in that regard. Also, another big success story has been our peak demand ambulance. This is another program that was made possible by some ARPA funding. We were able to hire six firefighter EMTs. We have an opportunity for a shift schedule or a schedule that is is not a 24-hour shift. They work in 10-hour days, they work 40 hours a week, and so some firefighters have found that very, a very nice change from a 24-hour shift. They may have childcare issues, and so that's, that's a good option for those folks. But really, it allows us to put additional units in service during peak demand time periods during the weekdays to take off some of that call volume from our other 24-hour staffed ambulances. And so since we placed those units in service in January, these ambulances have covered collectively over 955 transports, and their unit hour utilization, in other words, the percentage of time that they are actually responding to treating or transporting the patient is between .30 and .32. In other words, 30 or 32% of the time. That is pretty consistent with what we're seeing from some of our busiest ambulances in the system. So they're placed in the right places, they're, they're making an impact on our patient volume, and I see this as an opportunity in the future to kind of keep up with demand. And so we might be able to put some more of these peak ambulances on the street at lower cost than a, than a full 24-hour unit. But this has been a good news story for us. Telemedicine, been a little less successful, is still a good tool for us. We implemented it in April, we did some testing, and then we did full implementation in February. Since that time, we've only done about 143 consultations out of the individuals that were eligible for this. That represents about half of a percent of our patient population that we saw last year. It's a good tool, and in the cases where we did use it, 64% of those that participated did not require transport to a medical facility. But I don't think the public is really taking it and grasping it. I don't know if you have anything else to add on telemedicine, it's just not a, something that, when people call 911, they're not looking for this, they're looking for a ride to the hospital in many cases. And so they're not often willing to take advantage of a telemedicine conference. But again, this is something that we'll probably, you know, keep in our, in our toolbox for the future, but I don't see this really expanding and becoming a very popular opportunity. I know we've been talking to you the past few years about the ET3 program, the Emergency Triage Treatment and Transport Program that was pushed out a few years ago by CMS, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. This was basically a pilot program to test some new strategies for prehospital care, as well as looking at a different way for reimbursing for prehospital services. We were one of 120 EMS agencies that were originally selected to participate, but this program, not surprisingly, it's a federal program, has been plagued with some challenges. And and first and foremost, we had the delays due to COVID that pushed things off quite a while. We had a number of onerous federal requirements for some of the agreements that we had to sign. There were an inadequate number of local suppliers. We- We had discussed possibilities of alternative transport with some of our, our urgent care centers in the area. They were, they were onboard at first and then COVID hit and they were no longer interested after the fact. And a lot of our colleagues in other localities have had similar challenges. That's resulted in a low participation rate in alternative services by the public nationwide and very low number of interventions nationwide from, from which CMS can do the calculations to make some determinations on changing their, their reimbursement model. So they've decided to terminate the program effective December 31st. We don't know exactly what that means and how this is going to wind down. It really has no direct impact, impact at all on us. We've been participating, trying to help them out to come up with a sustainable model for the future. But we'll continue to monitor this. I know there's going to be some conference calls going forward to figure out how this all gets unwound and, and how we move forward to the future. But it is, it is concerning. The feds need to change the way they, they do the reimbursement. The, the private services out there are having real challenges, the private for-profit. The, the reimbursement model is not keeping up with costs for labor and supplies. And so therefore, they, they need to change the, the reimbursement model nationwide. Just a quick update on MedFlight. At the May Board of Supervisors meeting, you all approved a new MOA with the Virginia State Police, which allows us to take over all of the clinical staffing on the helicopter and the state police will reimburse us for our costs. That transition happened July 1 without a hitch. We've got the new team in place and we continue to, to work very closely with Virginia State Police going forward. With VCU pulling out of the program, we lost our supplier for our whole blood. So we've worked with a Nova Blood Bank, Blood Bank up in Northern Virginia to provide whole blood for the helicopter. And we see that as a real opportunity for the future. We'll probably be talking to you about that in a few months about offering whole blood here in the county on some of our units. And so more details to follow as, as we work on that strategy. We also continue to work with our local healthcare systems. I would love to see at least one more full-service hospital here in the county. In the meantime, a stopgap measure, our freestanding emergency departments, they are very effective as patient catchment areas for our, our emergency crews out there. They can get there quickly. They can drop their patients off and get back in service in their response districts. We work with Bon Secours to get approval for the, the Chester Freestanding ED. That's been a very successful program, a very successful facility there in Mr. Engels' district. It's the fourth busiest for transports for us and it's the busiest freestanding ED in the Bon Secours Richmond Market. Similarly, we work with HCA to establish and get approval for a freestanding emergency department. It'll be right here across the street. They've gotten COPN, or Certificate of Public Need Approval already from the Health Commissioner. It will be on Ironbridge Road near the extension of Nash Road. They've already purchased the land. They are waiting for corporate approval. That should happen very quickly. And they anticipate that they could start construction as early as December of this year. Take about 18 months to build that facility and get it open, but that'll be a, a very welcomed improvement here in the courthouse area, a very central location to the county. HCA is also very interested in the growth that's happening in the western part of the county and appreciate Mr. Carroll's efforts to, to help them look at some other options there with the growth that continues to head to the west with their success at the Swift Creek Emergency Center, which is Hancock Center right now. They are kind of landlocked. They would like to expand that facility and add some bids. And so they have filed a COPN application with the Health Commissioner to allow them to relocate and expand their facility. They've purchased some land across from Magnolia Green along Hull Street, which will be near the eventual connection with the Poway Parkway. So that project right now, we'll have to get through the COPN process and we've issued letters of support. I know that the board has as well as Dr. Casey and, as well as myself. And we stand ready to testify in support of that move when the hearing comes up. Another update on our capital projects, the new Matoka Fire Station. Mr. Carroll, I know you're probably happy to see this, is moving along very nicely. We started construction, started moving earth back in September of 2022. We had a groundbreaking ceremony in October. And the way things are going right now, we anticipate that we'll begin operating out of the station probably in the third quarter of FY 2024, this current fiscal year. So good news there. We've got a great contractor and things are moving along very well. I also had a question from the board about training facility needs. You probably remember this, this slide from some of our previous presentations. As you know, the public safety departments have two state-of-the-art public safety training facilities here in the county, the Eames Pittman Facility here at the courthouse complex. That was opened in the early to mid 90s. And then we have the Enon Public Safety Training Center that was opened in the early to mid 2000s. As it stands right now, the Enon Public Safety Training Center facility has never been fully completed. A couple of things on the fireside that we have to complete out there, of course, completing some of the roadways, parking, curbs, gutters. We have some temporary buildings that we're still using. We have two trailers that are used for, for classroom space. We have a portable shower facility and we have no space to park our apparatus that's based out there, so it sits in the outside air all the time. We, we have, you know, continued to look at this for a long-range plan, but one of the things that, that's going to happen this year, I know Clay Bowles is taking the lead on this, is an outside consultant will come in and do a training needs analysis for all of public safety and looking at a whole host of things going into the future. Most of these training facilities were developed and opened at a time when our public safety organizations were much smaller than they are today and also did not include the sheriff's office in the first go-around of these facilities. So there'll be more information to come. I'm sure during this year, we'll, we'll have this, this new study done and have a better idea of what the future may hold for this. Any, any particular questions on, on any of our training needs at the, at those facilities?
Do, do police also use this as well?
So the Enon Public Safety Training Facility, they have the driving track, they have the firing range, and I believe there's a small classroom there. They certainly would be welcome to use any of our classroom space there if they needed, you know, if they had to do some, some training evolutions. And we weren't using the, the bays that we have sort of designed in this, this conceptual drawing here. They could certainly use something like that as well. We work very well and very close together. So, yeah, there could be some opportunities here for them to use some of it if, if it's not being used by our staff. But this again, it's, it's been a lower priority. You know, our big priority in, in recent years has been fire stations and trying to make sure that we're serving the public. We know that for the next seven years, the, the debt capacity is going to be pretty tied up with the bond referendum. We have some big projects that'll be going forward. Fire has $40 million, I believe, in, in different projects and that includes the Chester Fire Station, the Ettrick Fire Station, as well as remodels at the Dutch Gap and Clover Hill Stations. And so that's going to keep us pretty busy probably for the next seven years. So these, this project here has not been as high on the priority list and it's been pushed out, you know, years down the road. But this will give us a, a good opportunity with a consultant coming in to look at and document our needs for the future because public safety is going to continue to grow as the county continues to grow. And so our training facilities need to keep pace in the future as we go forward. Some other improvements that we made over the past year with the support of the board, certainly our fire hose and nozzle replacement project. We worked with, with Matt and Gerard at the end of, I believe it was FY 2022, with some results of operation money that was available, close to $1 million was allocated for our fire hose and nozzle replacement. Much of those products have already been purchased. We're going through the training exercise now. We'll make a wholesale shift and change out of all of that equipment. This is equipment that will replace some nozzles that were getting up close to 30 years of age. The hose was about 10 years of age and this new hose is much lighter. It allows to, allows us to operate in lower pressures and deliver more water with, with less nozzle reaction. So it's much easier to work with. This will be a very big improvement for, for our firefighters. Also, we've had some real challenges with supply chains and demand that create long wait times for deliveries of ambulances and fire trucks. So we've changed the design on our ambulances and we've gone to a different type of chassis and many of our colleagues have done the same. This is a Ford F-550. You probably remember the larger chassis that we had, the, the International or the, the Freightliner chassis. They are, those are almost impossible to get now with the supply chain issues and delays. So these, these vehicles are a little bit easier to get, but they're still taking a long time to get them in, in service. And we're getting ready to go through a total redesign of our fire engine spec because our fire engines, when we place them on order today, it's taking four years. Where it used to take nine months, it's taking four years. So we're looking at a little bit different design, a different type of chassis that's, that's built by Pierce down in Florida that will allow us to get these vehicles in two years as opposed to four. But Mr. Holland, I know you'll like this, that, you know, the efforts of the board to get a good, effective apparatus replacement program in place has helped us. Our fleet's in good shape and we can, we can extend that life just a little bit more. Our fleet maintenance folks do a great job keeping our, our apparatus service and our firefighters at the station do a lot of good work behind the scenes as well. And so we've been able to kind of absorb this. Had we not put that apparatus placement, replacement program in place, you know, 10 or more years ago, we'd be in bad shape right now like a lot of other fire departments.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate that.
Our emergency management division continues to be very busy on a lot of initiatives. One of the things that they were involved in recently was pursuit of a grant through VDM. It's a, a grant that they're managing and they're placing these gauges. So we're going to have throughout some of the areas that are prone to flooding, some of our, our creeks and streams will have nine water level gauges along the Swift Creek, Falling Creek and Pocahontas Creeks, two precipitation sensors at Pocahontas State Park and Dutch Gap, and then one dual sensor, water level and participation at the Falling Creek and Cogville area. We want to expand this network and we certainly want to work to tie this together so we've got a good dashboard to monitor, you know, weather events as they come through the county. We've had a lot of heavy rain, you know, over the past few years and these sensors are going to be key to give us a heads up when things are coming downstream and we need to be prepared for those. So that's, that's an important project. Just a couple of other updates on emergency management. They continue to advertise the importance of Chesterfield Alert and getting more of our citizens signed up. We've worked very extensively with Dr. Casey and Mary here in the county. We have a 61% increase in employee enrollment in Chesterfield Alert because this is another way that we can alert our employees of, of hazards around the county complex or in the workplace. And Jess wanted me to let you know that all of our departments have submitted their COOP plans or continuity of operation plans. So that's been a long effort and we thank everyone to, to make that happen. Finally, just to give you an update on our, our community risk assessment standards to cover and staffing and deployment study that was completed and presented to you back in October by the Emergency Services Consulting International. They offered 57 recommendations. We have 10 of those recommendations complete. A lot of that was low-hanging fruit, procedural changes, adding things on our website, changing to a new written exam for our, our new hires. We have 13 recommendations in progress. One big one right now that I'm very excited about, of course, is our minimum staffing plan. That's, that's one big heavy lift that we'll, we'll be able to check the box on by the end of next year. And then we have 34 recommendations that are pending. Many of those will stay pending because they're going to be very expensive, long-term investments, whether it's new stations, staffing improvements. Those are things that are not going to happen overnight and they'll probably be pending for, for many years to come. So for the outlook for, for next year, things that we'll be working on. And as I mentioned before, when I talked to, to you at, during the Everyday Excellence Session, we, you know, are going to use this study as our guide, as our path, as our roadmap for the future. And as we work next year, you know, one of the big things that we're going to do is work with the Learning and Performance Center. We've already engaged Kevin Bruni on this. And we're going to be updating our, our strategic plan. And then our planning unit's going to update this study with all new data for years not covered by the study. And those will be two building blocks to pursue accreditation. And that's going to be probably taking place. We'll start that, that effort next calendar year. We'll complete the onboarding of the 36 new minimum staffing positions. We'll open the new Matoka Fire Station. We'll complete the zoning and design of the new Chester Fire Station. Land has been secured. I know that Clay is working to move that through the zoning process now to get conditional use for that and the park facility that will be co-located there. Another thing that we're going to do is we'll work with budget and human resources on analyzing our staffing needs for the Training and Education Division. That's one of our support areas that needs to, to, to be reviewed and potentially increased to make sure that we're not continuing to pull from operations for those staffing needs for training delivery. As I mentioned before, we're having some challenges with one of our volunteer rescue squads. We're going to analyze what's needed to cover those gaps going forward. And then we're going to continue to refine our mutual aid agreements with our partners in surrounding jurisdictions to make sure that we better manage those demands on Chesterfield Fire and EMS. And finally, we'll develop a lateral hiring process for paramedics that will enhance both internal and external recruitment efforts and make sure that we have enough paramedics in the system, given the, the age wave that we're going to see in the future, that make sure that we can serve the needs of that, that community. So that completes my presentation. I know it was a little longer than anticipated. We had some good discussion on the, the coal pile. I know that's on everyone's mind and some other things. Would be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions?
No, I have, I want to thank you, Chief, for outstanding work, especially the, the new hires and how you ingrained them into your system and the minimum staff. And I applaud all your efforts in there and the training. And thank you so much also for the additional study you're going to do regarding the onsite times from seven minutes to 10 minutes. I look forward to hearing that in terms of the distribution and how it works throughout the county. And I also still look forward to the Highlands Work Site, Station, if you will, the new Highlands Station. I look forward to that, that as well in the coming future. Is there anything else that we, you've done so, been so thorough in terms of the equipment? I appreciate that because I'm always concerned about replacement and apparatus that you have and replacement parts. Is there anything else we can do, you think, that will further enhance your department as we go forward? What are some new things we can do?
I can't say good, enough good things about the support that this board has provided our department as we move forward. We've made so much headway and certainly, you know, our, our budget department and being able to, to make sure that they understand better what our needs are and looking for those opportunities like the, you know, end-of-year funding or the, the results of operation to chip away at a lot of these equipment needs. We've made some great improvement. A lot of our equipment has been modernized. Our apparatus is going well. You know, continue that effort is the big, the big message of the day is, you know, making sure that we're staying with ongoing funding. Things are getting more costly. We're going to need to look at increasing some funding levels, I think, for some of our equipment replacement programs in the future, particularly apparatus. Some of the changes that we're making in the specs will hopefully keep those price increases from accelerating too far out of control. But all of our, our equipment is going to cost more next year than it did this year. And a fire engine, for example, is come, closing in very quickly on a million dollars. It's unbelievable. I never thought I'd see that. So continued funding for those things. And then, you know, our long-term strategies using, you know, on a reasonable, a reasonable approach. We know that, that funding is limited and there's so many other demands here in the county and we have to, to go, you know, forward in a measured way, you know, considering those, being deliberate about those, I think is, is very important as we move to the future. But, but I can't, I can't say enough about the support that I get from this board in this county.
Chief, I don't see anybody else's light coming on. I just want to thank you and your staff for a very thorough and comprehensive report. I think it's important for us, the community, not just us, but for the community to be able to see not just the fantastic work that your organization is doing, but the, the fact of the matter is that you and your staff put together comprehensive thoughts on where you need, where you're at, where you need to be in order to continue to provide the excellent service that you do to the community. And the only way the decision-makers can make the right decisions is by getting the right information given to us by you and your staff. I mean, we certainly get plenty of input from the community about what needs are in other, in different ways, which is certainly effective for us. But the boots-on-the-ground people that are doing the work, knowing what they actually need to be able to accomplish the mission is extremely important. And if I remember correctly, one of the 57 recommendations in that report was in fact for your organization to have this type of presentation, comprehensive presentation to the elected leaders in the jurisdiction so that we can actually be able to make these right decisions. So that must be one of those first 10 that was checked off. But, but, yeah, but again, thank you very much.